Hello and welcome to the Tri-City Herald Editorial Board with Pasco School Board candidate, Steve Christensen, he's the incumbent, and challenger Amanda Brown. I'm Cecilia Rexes and I'm the editorial writer with the Tri-City Herald and I have Jack Briggs, the retired publisher for the Herald with me today. So, um, why don't we let Steve, you're a veteran at this, I'm gonna let you go first with your two-minute opening. You can just start talking and I will hit the timer and-
Well, thank you Tri-City Herald Editorial Board for hosting this today. I'm, uh, I appreciate this opportunity to share with my friends and neighbors in Pasco, some of the things that we have done as a district and that I've done as a board member. So, to start with, I've been, I'm a Pasco resident. My name is Steve Christensen, Pasco resident for, since 2001. So over 20 years now we've lived here. My family and I moved here in 2001. We've got five children, all of them raised in Pasco and graduates of Pasco High School. So proud Bulldog parents. Like I said, I've been on the school board since 2013, ran first then because I believe education is critical and vital for our success, both as individuals and as a community. So wanted to be involved in helping make sure that we were getting the best education that we could for our students, given the resources that we have available to us. I've served nine years now as a board member. I think in that time, we've done some great things that will help our community, help our, our education system here in Pasco and look forward to sharing some of those with you today as we discuss this. I think one of the things that I bring to the table is, is I have a good working relationship with each of our board members, also a, a good working relationship with our administrative team. So it's, as a board member, we don't get down into the day-to-day operations of the school district, but we represent the community in helping guide the work in our district. I've got great relationships with people in the community because of my school board service, also because of my work and church service. So I think I'm a great candidate and I've done a good job and I'm certainly looking forward to serving another three years on the board because of the circumstances we're in. So, thank you.
That was just about perfect, thank you. We're just gonna let the timer run out here real quick. Okay. Let's see. Oh my goodness, okay. All right, Amanda, you can go for it and I'll just hit the timer whenever you start talking.
Well, I'd also like to thank the Tri-City Herald Editorial Board for this opportunity to share a little bit about myself and my running for Pasco School Board. So my name is Amanda Brown. Um, I have two children that are currently in Pasco schools. My son is a sophomore at Pasco High and my daughter attends Woodlawn Middle School. Um, I grew up in Pasco as well. I, I graduated from Pasco High, but my parents grew up here. My grandparents immigrated here from, from Montana and from Whitman County here in Washington. So I have a, a deep history here in Pasco. Um, as far as professionally, I am a teacher. I am in my seventh year of teaching. I taught kindergarten for two years and I'm in my fifth year of teaching dual language in Kennewick School Districts. I have a bachelor's degree in elementary education and a master's degree in English Language Learning Education. In my professional career, I have facilitated multiple committees. I currently chair the Kennewick School District Dual Language Curriculum and Adoption Committee and I'm also a member of the newly formed Instructional Materials Committee in Kennewick School District, which is providing a, a, a new layer of, I suppose, scrutiny for, for materials that are being adopted as curricula in Kennewick School District, which I think is a great way to get staff and parents and community involved to make sure that the materials that we're adopting are, are appropriate for our children, for the students going through the school system. And I feel that, oh, I'm running because I feel that I would be a voice on the board for, for teachers, as a teacher, for students, as someone who's working with students every day and, uh, with a knowledge of our diverse population in Pasco. As a dual-language teacher, I work with very diverse students. I, I teach dual language and so I teach in Spanish and English every day. The school that I work in has the highest percentage of migrant students in Kennewick School Districts. So I understand, um, the diverse-
I'm sorry, just to set my timer is going off, I don't understand.
Yeah, I was just finishing.
I'm so sorry, that was very annoying. Let me just get this, um, get this to stop. Okay, let's just get that to stop. Okay. All right. Well, you can finish your thought. Let me make it clear, so you, you work in Kennewick School District?
I do.
You work in Kennewick School District, live in Pasco and you run all the committees in Kennewick? Well, go ahead and finish your thought for a little bit and then we'll-
Um, I had basically finished-
You finished, okay, alrighty. Kind of abrupt, so. So, um, you don't really have a choice Amanda, about who you run against now that they've gone district only, right? I mean, you can't just run for any, against any school board member. So I guess my question is, um, why now? Steve was just re-elected. Um, he's been re-elected, I think, pretty easily if I remember right, for several years. So what was going through your head this, this time around? Like what-
That's a great question. So, um, you are correct in that I am running in my district seat in District Three. I did have a choice of running against, um, one of two Steves, either Steve Christensen or Steve Simmons. Um, I chose to run, uh, in District Three, first of all, because of the recent districting. Uh, District Three and District Two are the two majority-minority districts in Pasco, in the Pasco School Board seats. And so as a dual-language teacher, I, I feel that I bring that, the voice of the Hispanic community with me, with having, with working with Hispanic students every day, um, understanding, uh, their, their backgrounds and understanding how to teach, uh, not only in English, but in Spanish. I, like I said, my master's degree is, is in English Language Learning. So, um, I really want to be a voice on the board for those students that my district represents. Um, in, in other ways, I, I feel that I would bring a different voice to the board than Mr. Christensen. There's been, um, a, a few things that, you know, I've seen in his campaign and his literature that I, I think that we have some differing views on and I would like to bring, uh, that voice to the board as well.
So you just opened the door, Amanda. What are those differing views? And then I'll let Steve respond to that. What are the main views? Where do you differ?
The first would be, and I've heard Mr. Christensen, uh, speak to this pretty regularly about, uh, personal liberties and, uh, about divisiveness in the community and with that being brought into schools. And also I've heard, because I attend board meetings, I've attended board meetings for a long time and I attend all of them and to them in their entirety. So I've heard the concern that teachers are not teaching the Constitution, teaching, uh, about the, the foundation of this country and our personal freedoms. And as a teacher, I am thoroughly versed in our standards with social studies. And one of those standards that goes from K through five, it's like an overarching standard of K through five and then goes, it goes into more depth in six through 12, but it states that students should have an understanding of the key ideals of Constitution, the Declaration of Independence and other foundational documents of the foundation of our country. And, uh, that is something that teachers are required to teach. And I, I am concerned that there is rhetoric that is being dispersed in the community that says that we're not doing that because it is a requirement for teachers to do that. Um, in other ways, uh, I know the word equity is, is a really a buzzword right now among educators and among the community. To me, equity means providing every student what they need in order to be successful. Um, I read in some recent, uh, I believe it was in a Facebook post, Mr. Christensen, um, about equity among highly capable students. And I think that providing instructional materials and curricula for highly capable students is very important. But I also think it's important to focus that equity on our language learners and on the students who need that additional support in order to reach grade level standards in reading, math, writing, and, uh, to be able to get them to the point where we can say, okay, now we've, we have, we've helped these students out, we've given them what they need to succeed. And that's what is going to reach those, uh, when we look at, when the, when the board looks at the data points that comes from tests, uh, the standardized tests that are given. So we need to really make sure we're supporting all of our students and giving them what they need in order to be successful.
Okay, Steve, why don't you respond to some of what Amanda was saying there? I'm sure you've got- You've got something to say.
Where do we start? Yeah, so, so, so let me just deal with it in reverse order. So as far as equity goes, um, you know, we've struggled with this as a board. I shouldn't say struggled. This has been a priority for us to define what equity means, particularly in the Pasco School District or specifically in the Pasco School District. So we, um, I, I agree with Amanda that equity means giving or in the, uh, in the educational definition, we want all of our students to succeed. We want all of them to have the resources that they need to be successful. From our, those who are most challenged up to our most highly capable. We want all of them to succeed. We have a finite number of resources. So how do we, how do we divvy those up among the students so that they're all successful? And I think that's part of the challenge. The other challenge with equity too is, uh, at least in our district, we're, one of the things we're struggling with is, is cohesiveness within the district. So we don't, we don't want division in our district. We want, we want unity, we want people to belong. So one of the things that we've done with our equity definition is to work to develop this culture of belonging. We want a culture where people feel like they're a part of our community, like they belong. And, and I think everybody, everybody belongs. Everybody has something that they can contribute. So that's what, that's what we're working towards. She talked about individual liberty. I am, I am a big believer in individual liberty. The foundation of this country was upon the principles of liberty and specifically individual liberty. Now, we all have rights and, and I think we should exercise those rights to the point where, or have the liberty to exercise those rights to the point where they start interfering with other people's rights. With liberty comes responsibility and I think Amanda mentioned that too. So we have a responsibility to be good citizens, to be involved and be engaged, but we should have the liberty to live our lives as we choose to. And so those are, I mean, that, that's a firm belief of mine. So if that's an accusation that, that, that that would be divisive, then, then I, I'm not sure how it is, but because that's the foundation of our country. But I think, uh, we all should have individual liberty with a, and freedom to exercise that.
So how does that affect the school district though, Steve? I mean, um, are there policies being-
So for example-
Go ahead, I was just wondering, are there policies in place?
Okay. No, I think it's, uh, so individual liberty is specifically, especially over these past couple of years dealing with COVID. We've had some concerns both with masks and with the vaccines. And so these things have, have brought some tension, not only, there's not been tension in our board, but in our district. We've had parents who are upset that their children are having to go to school wearing masks. We've had, uh, a challenge with vaccines. Teachers being mandated that if they're going to teach in our district, then they have to have the vaccine. So I think these things have been a challenge in our district when it comes to individual liberty. And additionally, I think we need to be teaching individual liberty to our students. The, this, this again is, is a foundational principle of our country, uh, the right to live your life as you see fit, to the point that it doesn't interfere with somebody else's life. So, and I know these are discussions that are being had at a national level of how much is, is too much liberty? But, but this country is a great country and it's great because we have that liberty. People are trying to get here to enjoy the life that we enjoy because of that liberty. And I, I hate to see teachings being brought in that, that diminish that, so.
And you think that's happening? You think teachings are being brought in?
I think, well, I think, I don't know that teachings are being brought into our school that diminish that, but I think, I don't, I worry that it's not being taught, that we have individual rights, that we can do anything, that, that, that the future is wide open to us to the extent that we want to prepare ourselves and go forward and accomplish anything we want. To me, those are, those are invaluable teachings that, that I wish and hope are being taught throughout our school district, that you know what? You as an individual have the capacity to do anything. You're not restricted by, by anybody else but yourself. So I, that's my concern, is that these things are being taught and that they are being reinforced to our students.
Steve, when you're talking about individual liberties, it, it has been evidenced itself, as you said, through the mask issue and CRT. What's your feeling on vaccines? What's your feeling on, what's your feeling on masks? That people should have the right no matter when on CRT or on vaccines rather, um, that they should have either been vaccinated or not?
Well, so I, I know these are, these can be controversial issues. Uh, so I'll address the mask thing first. So if masks work and you are wearing a mask, then I don't think anybody else should be required to wear a mask. If masks don't work, then why is anybody wearing a mask? And so those are, to me, those are pretty simple logical principles. And to me, that's a, you have a choice. If you want to wear a mask, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to, um, tell you you can't. I, and, and if somebody chooses to wear a mask and others are making fun of them, shame on them. I don't, I don't have any tolerance for bullying in any situation, uh, and especially masks. People, if they're doing it because they're concerned for their health and they feel like it's helping them, great, they should have that liberty. If parents want their children to wear masks, great, let them do that. As far as vaccines go, I think, um, we've, we're fortunate that this vaccine was developed and developed quickly, but the evidence that this vaccine is preventing the spread of COVID is, is pretty thin. So to require this as a requirement or to make this a requirement of, of, uh, employment, to me is, is concerning. Uh, there's evidence even that this vaccine is harmful to some people, especially to kids. So I, I, I worry that this becomes, that it's been a mandate for our teachers and our, our staff and that it becomes a mandate to children too, to stay in school. So I, I'm, I'm opposed to those things. I think people should have the right to make that decision for themselves.
So Amanda, um, oh, go ahead, Jack, go ahead.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, you were fine. I just think she needs to-
Yeah, well, how does Amanda feel about that?
Right, she needs a turn to talk, so.
Thank you. Uh, as a teacher, I taught through the, I taught through quarantine. I did distance learning. So I saw my students sitting at home on their Chromebooks. Um, I saw that we weren't meeting in these of our students and I was eager to get back into the classroom. So masks, if masks were a requirement to get back into the classroom, I, that was not an issue for me at all as long as I could be back in the classroom with my students and, and the environment where I knew that they would be in the best educational and being the most educational environment for them. Um, concerning masks today and vaccine mandates today, I still have students who wear masks in class. I don't see an issue of bullying with it because it, it, there are a high percentage of my students who do wear masks. Uh, like I stated before, I work in the school that has the highest population of migrant students, meaning that their parents, my students, my students' parents work in the fields, they work in warehouses. They don't always have jobs that have benefits. So if they catch COVID and they can't, they have to quarantine themselves, they're out of work for one or two weeks with no pay. And so it's, it's a, still very top of mind for a lot of my students to not get COVID and masks are still being worn in schools and I am of a proponent of that. I want to make sure that my students feel safe in my classroom and not all students, no matter what district they're in or where they're at, that they are in an environment where they feel safe and they, they can exercise their personal liberties to wear a mask. As far as vaccine mandates, from the beginning, uh, that they were required, there has been the opportunity to get an exemption. I work with teachers who have vaccination exemptions and they were able to come back to work as long as they were willing to fill out the exemption form. I don't know anyone who was denied an exemption. And as far as I understand, I believe that vaccine mandate expires at the end of November of this year. I know that right now, um, that there's no volunteers allowed in the school. It's, they're not vaccinated, but after November of this year, I believe, then volunteers will be able to come back to the school vaccinated or not.
So it, it seemed like, and maybe my take is wrong, but it seemed like the Pasco School Board did not have some of the drama, you know, that we saw in, in others, that we've seen in other school districts, neighboring school districts. Is that, did the board want to defy the mask mandate at any point, Steve? Or did they want to defy the vaccine mandate? I mean, how far did you folks go? I guess, I need a refresher.
Sure. Well, I think, um, I think the fact that we didn't see the drama in our school board speaks to the character of each of the board members. Um, I, I think it's been pretty evident that, that I'm not, I'm not opposed to masks. I just think we should have the choice. But I wore a mask when I went to my meetings because that was required of me. That was the expectation, that was frankly, that was the law. So I, I dutifully wore the mask. I think we probably had some board members that were opposed to that, that, that wanted to make it optional, but we didn't. As a board, we hung together, we knew what we needed to do and were willing to do that and moved forward in that. So, so you didn't see the drama in Pasco that you saw in other districts.
Right.
And, and I think that's just the, the quality of our board, the character of our board. And I think it's our, our, our administrative leadership as well. I think they did a great job in educating the people and helping us as board members stay informed. So, uh, we just have a great working team there.
Okay, so Amanda, are there any other concerns? You say you go to school board meetings all the time. Is there other topics that have come up that are concerning to you?
Well, on that last topic, I do believe, Mr. Christensen, that there was a, a letter written by you to convene an emergency session of Congress to repeal the mask mandate. And, uh, to correct me, you probably remember this better than I do in December of last year or January of this year. Um, one thing that concerned me about that letter was that there was no mention of, of student, how the masks affected student success. It was just to repeal the mask mandate and I believe that the, the student, that the effect of masks on student success was added later by the rest of the board.
So I'm not sure what letter you're referring to, Amanda. You're gonna have to enlighten me.
A, a letter that, uh, if I remember correctly, um, was written by the board and sent to the governor to convene an emergency session of Congress to repeal the mask mandate in schools.
Okay. So that letter was sent, yes. So the governor had taken this authority upon himself to make masks mandatory. Uh, in this state, we have an elected representative body. We have the House, we have the Senate, who are our legislators. And that ask was simply to, for the governor to go to the legislature and get their input in whether these masks should be required or optional, rather than taking that authority and unilaterally making that decision himself. So that was to get the people's elected representatives involved in this decision. But Steve- It wasn't, it wasn't to repeal the mask mandate. It was to get the, the representatives' buy-in that this was the, the correct approach to take.
But Steve, he, he feels he was faced with a pandemic and had the emergency powers to do it. We have argued that he shouldn't have kept it in as long as he did, but we did not argue that he, should he not have had in an emergency situation that the, the power to do that?
Yes, I, I, well, he did. And I think that, that's why we have a governor, where we give the governor emergency powers. If I were, I, I think it's unfortunate that our legislature made it open-ended. I think the correct response to emergency powers is to, to put a limit on it. Thirty days, sixty days, ninety days, some limit, so that he has to go back to the legislature. Again, these are the people's elected representatives. These are the ones that are closest to the people and renew his emergency powers. I fully acknowledge that he had the authority to do that. I, I, I'm not questioning that. I wore my mask to, to school board meetings because that was, frankly, that was the law. That was the mandate, so. But I just think it's best if it's the people's elected representatives that are extending those emergency powers.
Can Cecilia come in the mother?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Back, back in 2013, you knocked off a longtime incumbent, Bill Leggett, by saying that the time called for new ideas and fresh perspectives. You've been there nine years. Can't command that argument against you?
I suppose she could, um, that, that, you know, I, I'm a firm believer that we need some, uh, that new blood is always good, new ideas are always good. I think in this case though, Bill Leggett had been there for sixteen years, I believe. He'd been there for a number of years. Yeah. Uh, he was getting older and one of the things, one of the things, at least for me as a board member, and, and I've heard people say that, look, you don't have kids in school. How can you be a good board member? How can you effectively represent the parents and, and, and the school district? And to that, I would say, well, a lot of people who, uh, pay the money for these schools are, don't have kids in school. So they need representation as well. And then as it stands, I am the oldest board member now that Sherri Langton is no longer on the board. I am the only board member who is, uh, who doesn't have kids in the school. I'm the oldest board member in school or on the, on the board. And so I think, uh, I represent that group of people now, although I don't feel that old. There's a, I think they need some representation as well. So I think for me, this is a great opportunity.
Amanda, do you feel, do you feel you do have new ideas that he may be getting? He may have been in that seat too long?
Absolutely.
What are your new ideas?
Well, I believe that I've gone over some of them and, and discussing, uh, my roles in, in KSD. I would love to see, uh, Pasco School District implement an Instructional Materials Committee, much like KSD has done, to provide the additional layer of scrutiny to our instructional materials as we see, um, more things like book banning is coming to the forefront in school boards. Um, as a teacher, I would really like to offer my, my perspective on what is happening in schools because I feel that there are a lot of, uh, there's a lot of, of rhetoric that what, what is happening in the community that simply doesn't reflect what's happening in classrooms. And, uh, a lot of the times they're referred back to Superintendent Whitney or to other superintendents to, uh, to communicate what is happening in schools when I feel that it would be very valuable for a board member to be able to offer that perspective.
So I'm, okay, I'm just gonna try to generalize this a little bit. So Steve, are, because what we're seeing in the school boards, and let's just face it, is, um, a lot of conservative, um, uh, philosophies that are, in other, other communities are pretty divisive, right? That they're pretty divisive and it's, and, and it's almost a political divide, not really about education as much as, uh, a political, um, you know, like I said, it's, it's all about politics and spouting different things. And do you see that? And is that what's going on here a little bit, Amanda? Is that, do you think Steve's aligned more with some of the, some of the hard right? And you would like to replace, replace him on the board? Or is that, am I getting the wrong picture here? So I, I might be just getting the wrong-
No, I don't believe so. I mean, you mentioned when, uh, Mr. Christensen ran against Mr. Leggett and I believe in that election, he was endorsed by the Republican Party. I haven't sought endorsement from any party, any political party in this. And so my voice comes from a voice of, of wanting the best for our students and, and wanting students' success.
Go ahead, Steve, if you've got something to say. I mean, I just, it just, we're seeing, we're seeing that on a national scale. And I mean, and so I was just wondering if that's what the undercurrent was here, so.
For me, it's, that's not the undercurrent. Again, I, I think, I'm not, I want what's best for our students too.
Yeah.
Well, I've been there nine years. I mean, there's school, there's school board members across the state that have been there a long- Well, I've been there nine years. I mean, there's school, there's school board members across the state that have been there a long time. Sherri Langton, who just, just didn't run again last year. She was there for, gosh, since 2007, I think, fifteen years. So again, I don't think my ideas are old or outdated or need to be replaced. I mean, I, I welcome any thoughts that you might have, Amanda. You're, you can certainly submit those and email to us as a board. We have public comment at the beginning of every meeting. If you think there's something we're not doing, I, I, I welcome you to bring those things to us. That's, that's, that is totally acceptable and, and even makes us better as a district. So I, I, I welcome that, but I don't.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't mean to interrupt.
Oh, I think, I think as you, you're seeing this movement among conservatives, if you will, that, that feel like our education system has been pulled to the left. And so I think it's, they're getting involved now, and it seems like it's, it seems like it's a movement. But I think it's just, hey, we've, we've got to be involved so that these, you mentioned critical race theory has been a big buzzword, even sexual education, these things that that are concerning to conservatives are coming to the forefront. So I think they're, they're getting involved so that they can, so that they can make sure that these things don't creep in and, and begin to take teachings that should be in the family in another direction.
Steve, do you feel that in K-12 education, education has indeed been pulled to the left?
Well, I think in our district, we have, we have done a good job of keeping our education system balanced. I, I, I think in some districts, that's definitely the case, assuming that, that the reporting that you hear about particularly sexual education or some of the, the, the practices that are reported in some school districts about critical race theory and its teachings, I, those are concerning to me. If we were to see those here, I would be very concerned. I don't see that that's happening here. I hope it isn't, but if it were, I would be concerned.
Amanda, you, you work in Kennewick. You've got a family to take care of. What are your, what are your connections to the Pasco community in such a way that you can be representative, not just of the teachers, but of the parents, of the whole community? What are your, what are your community ties?
Well, I have two students who attend Pasco schools, as I had stated before. My son is a student at Pasco High, my daughter is in McLaughlin. So I'm personally invested in student success, having two kids in the district right now. I, as far as with the community, I've been here my whole life. Pasco is where I was born and raised. I, I have a vested interest in, in the success of Pasco. And I've seen so much growth in my life as I've lived here. Pasco has grown from being the, the town where, honestly, when I was going to Pasco High, everyone said that was the school that no one wanted to go to. And I, we now have, I don't believe that that's the, that's what is being said now. We, we have an excellent, excellent district, and the teachers here are amazing. Our students are achieving great things. I just want to see that continue. I want to see continue, Pasco continue growing.
Steve, is there a question you wished we'd asked that we haven't asked today?
Not necessarily. I mean, I, I, let me just say, I, I, our time is limited. But I think as a board, we've done some great things. I'm, I'm happy to share those with you. I don't, I mean, you're welcome to go look at some of the things on my Facebook page. I'm not, I'm not trying to poll people there. But, but yeah, I, I just, I want people to know that we've done some really great things as a board. And, and simply want to continue doing that work.
What about you, Amanda? Is there a question that you wished we'd asked or a topic that we should have brought up?
No, it seems this interview has been very thorough and informative.
Okay, all right. You don't want to miss anything if there was something that you wanted to bring up. So, so I promised Steve we'd be done, but, oh, go ahead, Jack.
Perhaps a better question, Cecilia, is, what question are you glad we didn't ask?
Is there one?
No.
Yeah, could we say another half hour?
I was prepared to answer any question.
I promised Steve, he has a meeting at two, so we need to wrap up. So thank you. I, this was, this was great. I really didn't know much about this race. So until we started researching and talking, and I'm really glad we, the voters have, have a choice. Because I, a lot of times, you know, there's just one, one choice on the ballot. And it's always, it's always better when there's two. So anyway, so Amanda, I'll let you start. I'll get my timer going, and you can wrap up, and then Steve, you can wrap up too, so.
I'll let you tell me when the timer's ready.
You just talk. You just talk. I will click it.
I'm Amanda Brown, and I'm running for Pasco School Board District Three. I'm a teacher in the tri-cities. I work with diverse students. I have knowledge of pedagogy. I have degrees in education. I'm in schools on a regular basis. I want to bring that knowledge to the Pasco School Board. So thank you so much for this opportunity to share a little bit more about myself.
Great. Okay, all right. Steve, whenever you're ready.
So first, thank you, Cecilia, for setting this up, and thank you, Jack, for, for participating. Thanks for the questions. Thanks, Amanda, for being here. Thanks for running. I think this is a, this has made me a better candidate. It's made me do a little more digging, and, and that's always a good thing. Again, I've been on the school board for nine years. I'm running again for another, this is to finish out the three years of the term for position three. I think we've done some really good things as a board. I, I feel like I've been a big part of that in helping move the district along. I've got a great working relationship with our current board members, great relationship with our district administrative team. I've got some good connections in the community and think I'm a great candidate for this seat. And I would appreciate your vote in the upcoming election. So, thank you.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
A pleasure meeting both of you.
Yeah, it was. It was great. It was great.